I want to welcome you to tonight's Columbia Heights City Council meeting for Monday, August 10, 2020. Could I have a roll call, please? Kristi.
Commission Member Biskins?
Here.
Commission Member Williams?
Here.
Commission Member Mershen?
Here.
Commission Member Nowitzki?
Here.
Commission Member Schmidt?
Here. Thank you. If you are able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I'll read our mission statement. Actually, I was looking at the minutes from Phil Curran. It looks like our mission statement has changed a little bit, tweaked a little bit. Our mission is to provide the highest quality public services. Services will be provided in a fair, respectful, and professional manner that effectively address changing citizen and community needs in a physically responsible manner. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion? Is all moved?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Williams. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is Proclaimations, Presentations, Recognition, Announcements, and Guests. And we have a presentation from our 2020 Goal Setting final report from Phil Curran. Welcome back.
Thank you.
It's been, it's been an unusual year. Thank you.
It sure has been, hasn't it? Thank you for having me back. Thank you for having me join you for the process of doing your 2020 goal setting. I have presented to you a final report of our goal-setting work. Tonight, I just wanted to quickly talk a brief bit about the process that we used and the outcomes that we've come up with tonight, which I present to you for your consideration. As you, as you mentioned, Mayor, we certainly have many challenges in the role of leadership today in the public sector, and we're being tested on many fronts with a lot of uncertainty and changing needs. And I want to compliment you on keeping your focus on the big picture. And I think the time you spent on goal-setting focusing on the things that are important to you will help you and your organization and your city keep those in focus as we move forward. Our, our process that we went through about six weeks ago touched on three major components. First, we revisited and updated your long-term direction. I'll, I'll touch on that in a little bit when we revisit what those vision and strategy statements are. But second, we discussed and evaluated your current conditions. The last time we went through this process in 2017, a lot of things have changed since that time, both externally in the world and community around us, as well as internally with your organization. We did check in on the progress of your goals in 2017. Just as an outsider coming in to work with you on this process, it was very impressive, the amount of progress that you, as a group, felt you had made on those goals that you set three, roughly three years ago. So that was very impressive. And I think bodes well for your future trying to accomplish the goals that we're going to talk about tonight. We also talked about what's going well in the community, what opportunities you have before us, before you, and what the challenges are facing both the community and your organization. And that, that led us to the third part, which was developing the goals plan that I'll highlight here tonight. Your vision statement, you just read the mission statement, Mayor. Your vision statement essentially stayed the same. Columbia Heights is a thriving, historic, diverse, and eclectic community. The city offers housing and business opportunities for all while providing small-town charm combined with all the advantages of big-city living. Columbia Heights is a destination that maintains a balance of urban style and suburban pace. We welcome everyone to rediscover the heights and all-American city. That's a statement that you hope to be true now and you hope to be true in the future as you head and lead the community. We, we talked about what the long-term strategies are. What does that vision statement mean in terms of delivering to the community? And we revisited the work you did in 2017. And in this section, we did do quite a bit of modification. And so I just want to touch on those eight long-term strategy statements. The first statement that was important to you over the long run is that you have a safe community. You highlighted community-based policing, safe multimodal streets, and high-skilled public safety staff as key components of that strategy statement. A second strategy statement is you see this community continuing to have and building on a diverse, welcoming, small-town feel. You felt family friendliness, forward-thinking organization, progressive, positive, connected energy, and an integrated community is important. The third strategy statement in the long term is being a community that has economic strength. Talked about making sure that your organization continues to market the city positively, have self-sustaining businesses, jobs, and services in the community, focusing on Central Avenue as a vibrant destination, and maximizing your land use opportunities. The fourth vision statement was making sure that you have as a community excellent housing in neighborhoods, strong, connected neighborhoods, stable, rising property values, remodeling and redeveloping aging housing stock, and a balanced approach to housing. The fifth long-term strategy statement was equity and affordability, maintaining equitable access for your citizens to services, sustainable, building sustainability in many aspects, and making sure your city has a strong financial position. The sixth strats, long-term strategy statement was having strong infrastructure in public services, maintaining talented, skilled public servants, well-planned and maintained infrastructure, partners with the school, the county, and your neighbors, neighboring communities, and making sure that your city hall facilities, public facilities are updated, eliminating duplicative geographic services, and embracing technology. The seventh statement was making sure that your community has opportunities for play and learning, well-rounded recreational services, a library, community, library being the community focal point and a hub for learning, having a quality park network, being pet-friendly, that was a new addition, I think, this year, and, and having vibrant community events. And last, but not least, the A strategic statement was having an engaged, multi-generational, multicultural population. And what that meant to you was having a positive community working together, having a workforce and city committees that reflect the community, community cohesions and organization, among organizations, complete, open access to information, and engaging younger generations. So as we, we, we took a look at those long-term perspectives, we looked at where you were today, and we ultimately came up with a bunch of, with a list of draft goals that, that the group largely looked at together and began to prioritize. And I present to you tonight a, a primary goals program for 2020 that, that includes the top 10 items that your collective group came up with. That first primary goal on your list was, I believe, essentially unanimous amongst your staff and your, and your council that participated. And that was making sure that in the short term, you expand and promote community events, activities, and organizational behaviors that encourage engagements and interactions of multicultural populations. Some ideas that came up in that short term were developing a citizen academy, encouraging involvement for all, incorporating changes in hiring to be reflective of the community, and conducting structural bias review in areas of city business. The second short-term primary goal was enhancing and strengthening community and police relations. The third primary goal was strengthening housing options throughout the city. And we, we discussed some ideas that came up there, where improving rental property through code enforcement, promoting programs to assist renters, training and education, educational opportunities for landlords, and reviewing investor-based purchasing practices. You also talked about improving owner-occupied housing through revitalization programs, increased code enforcement, consideration of a point-of-sale inspection program. The fourth short-term goal was construction of a new city hall at the corner of Fourth and Central. Fifth was developing funding mechanisms and take action on key capital projects. A couple of things specifically mentioned with that short-term goal were alley improvements and park projects. The sixth, the sixth goal on your short-term primary goals list was developing a master plan for Mershen Hall in the Public Works Building. Seventh was redeveloping, was driving redevelopment of key sites in town, including the Hy-Vee site, public safety facility, and city hall site. The eighth short-term primary goal that you came up with was implement and complete projects identified in your parks' master plan. And I believe completing a parks' master plan was on your 2017 list, so this is a progression of that. The ninth item was scheduling regular reviews of this goals program, including department updates and status sharing with the council. And the last item, which I think came back, I know, with, with overwhelming staff encouragement, was, was looking forward to implementing technological innovations in your organizational processes. Some ideas that came up under that short-term goal were expanding e-government offerings, improving online recruitment, improving and expanding IT services, website redesign, city council and commission alternatives for community broadcasting, and supporting hybrid distance learning through library programs for students. So with that, there are some additional secondary goals that you came up with contained, that are contained within your report. And, and I encourage you to continue to look at these goals and incorporate these goals into your organizational processes. Now, judging from the success that you had in your 2017, I know that you're already doing that, I would encourage you to continue keeping them on the forefront, keeping them in front, in front of you as you navigate the times ahead. With that, I would yield for any questions you may have or comments you may have. And again, thank you for the opportunity to work with you, and wish you well implementing this program.
Anybody want to make any comments? Go ahead. Councilmember Biskins?
I just wanted to say thank you for being our facilitator. Again, enjoyed the experience, and I look forward to hopefully seeing you in the future as we do this again in a couple of years. I think it was a great experience, and it's great to have the staff and the council working together to really move on these goals. We've done quite a bit, I think, from the last time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank you very much for the time you spent and the energy you put into that to make, to come to the right goals. And you did a nice job, and I thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mershen?
Just want to say thank you. You did a great job. It was great working with you again.
It was a pleasure for me as well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Nowitzki?
Same. Thank you very much. It was a pleasure. It was nice to have someone leading the interaction between council and staff and working together. And it seems like everyone's really happy in what we're doing, so.
Great.
I, I just wanted to say because of COVID, our online activities have increased significantly with, with web and, and Zoom meetings. And it's, IT's been very busy. But, you know, one of the things our library, you know, we struggled with it not being open, but it was very busy online as people are getting eBooks, you know, over, I think it was over $7,000 last month on eBooks, an extreme increase. And it's great, even though they can't, if they couldn't physically be there, that we're starting to push towards that. And yes, it may be implemented a little bit faster. Government usually works in that way, but it, it's been interesting to watch as we have a new normal for right now. So, yeah, thank you. I appreciate all the hard work you put into this. I know staff did a great job throwing in ideas, too. Appreciate that, because council shouldn't be the ones just making the decisions here. You're the ones that actually have to do the stuff. So we can make wild claims all that we want, but it, the only reason this is working is because the staff is doing it, and we appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly, did you want to say anything? Okay. All right. Thank you. Next item is our consent agenda. We have several items unless anything, I did want to pull item D, if that's still possible. I did talk to Kevin about it. Anybody else?
D, you said?
D, the letter D.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right. I'll go through all of them and then turn it over to Kevin on D. Consent agenda. Item A is approval of the city council minutes of July 27. Item B is acceptance of the library board minutes of June 3. Item C is approval of the environmental services and vibration monitoring contract for the demolition of the office building and the parking ramp at 3989 Central. That's going to Braun Inertech in the amount of $19,819. Item D is pulled. Item E is authorization to enter into a joint powers agreement with the city of Fridley, and that's for the 53rd Avenue Street Improvement Project from Central Avenue to 1,100 feet west. Item F is establishment of the dates for the 2020 public special assessment levy hearings. There's project 1907, 1902, 1802, 1906, and 1801. Notices will be mailed out on those. Item G is authorization to enter into a joint powers agreement with the city of Minneapolis for 37th Avenue improvements from Central Avenue to Stinson Boulevard. Item H is approval of the purchase of a Yale mechanical bipolar ionization systems, and this is for multiple buildings using the coronavirus relief funds. That would be for public safety, Mershen Hall, the library, Public Works, City Hall, and the three liquor stores. Item I is approval of the Niotron protection software in the total, in the amount of $15,000, and that's for a three-year contract. The first year would be paid for out of CARES Act funds. Item J is entering into an agreement with Comcast for Internet and managed network services for a five-year period totaling $161,000. Item K is resolution 2020-56 appropriating $12,000 from the fund balance of the general fund to the 2020 budget for information systems funds. That's to help fund a part-time staff person through the end of the year to assist with implementation of IT programs, primarily due to the CARES Act improvements that we're looking at. Item L is approval of the business license applications that are in your packet. And item M is a review of the bills totaling $1,404,220.50.
Okay, I made a mistake. I meant to pull item E instead.
Oh.
Could you read?
Sure.
Item D?
Item D is an award of professional services contract for preliminary surveying and design for the 2021 state aid street rehabilitation project. That would be with Bolton &amp; Menck for a total of $24,572.
All right. No wonder I was a little confused when you were talking to me earlier. It, it was supposed to be item E. Can, with the exception of item E, can I get approval of the consent agenda item as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Nowitzki. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And Kevin, could you talk about item E, 53rd Avenue, instead?
Mayor members of the council, the joint powers agreement is with the city of Fridley. The joint powers agreement, it details out the responsibility of each city as it relates to the specific improvement. In this case, the improvement is roadway improvements, and it's really traffic safety improvements along 53rd Avenue from Central Avenue over to, and it's really in between the Medtronic entrances. There's two entrances there. And on the north side in Fridley, that would really be the Target entrance. So the improvement includes raised center median, and then also not a full roundabout, but a turnabout, as there'd be no north-south leg on that. And this is following a traffic study that the city of Fridley conducted jointly with the city of Columbia Heights up there, and found that there could be an accident reduction up there for what's happening up there with the accesses out on 253rd. The project itself is funded, about 90% funded through, construction-funded, through a MnDOT grant, and that's the Highway Safety Improvement Program, or Hzip, for the work. And then the, with the funding, the construction date would be in 2022. We have not gone through anything beyond really a layout design for this, and we have not gone through any type of public informational meetings with any of the neighborhood or the affected property owners. And that is something that we would develop as the plans and details are more fully developed. So that's something that would happen over the course of this winter.
Okay. We had some businesses that were concerned about this, it's not a roundabout, but it's...
A turnabout.
Turnabout. When is the next public hearing on this?
We, mayor members of the council, we do not have a specific date established. One of the things is that a consultant would design this and really do a more detailed traffic study with this, but that just has not been done yet. And I think, I'm not sure, I guess I have not heard what some of the, other than access, and how, you know, if people are coming eastbound, how they would get to westbound, and that's really using Central Avenue and doing a legal U-turn. That's really about the only complaint that I've heard up there with, with the turnabout. The turnabout is sized to handle tractor-trailer movement, so it'd handle a full 53-foot-long tractor-trailer. So the sizing of that certainly wouldn't be an issue for any type of deliveries or other that you'd see up there. But I know the one complaint I've heard up there is how is that movement going to work for people coming eastbound if they want to go westbound or, or to the west side? People coming eastbound to the, which would be beyond or further west of the turnabout, they can certainly go through that turnabout and then turn into Target. It's really the businesses on the north side where you'd have to use a U-turn to get into any of the businesses on the north side, which is the Starbucks Strip and then also the restaurant that's right there. And then the timing of the signal would be changed along with right turn prohibited on southbound, trunkway with 65.
Okay. And then is there going to be more limited access for people coming out of Medtronic? Or how is that going to help? Because they have always complained about the length of that si, excuse me, stoplight as people are trying to turn north onto 65 to head towards 694.
Right. So the lane configuration will change slightly, but the timing of the signal needs to be improved so that we don't get that backup, particularly that backup in the PM as far back to the turnabout as it goes. So that would be changed through the timing of the signal.
Will there still be two turn lanes then?
Quite frankly, Madam Mayor, I can't answer that right now. There may be, but until the design is done, I can't answer that for certain.
Okay. So as soon as we hear about the public hearing, I know Medtronic would probably want to know about it and all those businesses.
Right. We'll meet individually with the adjacent property owners as we normally do prior to any public hearing.
And, thank you. Thank you very much. And I need to motion to approve the joint powers agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nowitzki, second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. Next item is public hearings for rental license for 5049, 5051 Jackson Street Northeast. And who is going to be talking on this? We got, just a minute. Excuse me, present.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your attention tonight. So we have in front of you a resolution regarding the rental license of 5049, 5051 Jackson. As you heard at the work session, there's been a lot of activity at this property over the last couple of years. And that includes, you know, from 2016 to 2018, two calls for service. When the current resident moved in in mid-2018, those calls for service went up to 262 year-to-date, and that's kind of what's driving the, the motion here in front of you this evening. Under the findings of the facts, you'll see some of the highlights, you know, that there was misdemeanor criminal activity charged 20 times from 2018 to 2020, and the property violated the Columbia Heights ordinances on public nuisance calls at least 44 times. And speaking to the city attorney, I understand that we have an option to go a couple of different ways. We do have some representatives from Halen House here, and they could choose to have a public hearing, or we can potentially table the motion and just issue it as the, the license stands. And I'll, Mr. Hafe talked about that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Yeah, Jim Hafe, city attorney. The, the options for you are a few here tonight because I had an opportunity to speak with council and another representative for the license holder. And the, the way that the item was placed on the agenda, it was to conduct a public hearing, and then the recommendation of the staff was, or is laid out in the resolution for a 12-month provisional license. But I made the point to the representatives for the license holder that if we have the public hearing, if we open a public hearing and have the public hearing, the council is not limited to the staff recommendation of a 12-month provisional. There is also the option that you revoke the license and, and not have any provisional license at all. Now, the, it's my understanding that the representative from the license holder wants to talk about not having a provisional license, but just being placed back on because of some activity, that some remedial action they're taking at the property, having the license just reinstated on a regular basis. So the question becomes whether the council, prior to opening the public hearing, wants to hear the, the information from the license holder only in regards to the provisional or non-provisional license. And if we can resolve the matter with that information, then we could table the hearing, the full hearing, and place it on an upcoming council meeting to determine whether things are happening the way that they're supposed to be happening. If the license holder makes their, their request for a full license and not a provisional, then the council needs to decide whether you want to issue that full license, or whether we will actually open the public hearing, conduct the full public hearing, and then have the council make their determination, which is not restricted to the staff recommendation. Does all of that make sense to you procedurally?
Mm-hmm.
So I would turn over the podium to the representatives from the license holder and kind of let them decide how they, what they want the council to hear with regard to the provisional or non-provisional, and then whether they want to take, have the opportunity to have a full public hearing in front of the council.
Okay. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, council. My name is Katie Elliott. I'm an attorney for Halen House in Bridges, Minnesota. And with me is Kristi Reese. She's a representative of Bridges, Minnesota, as well.
Thank you.
So the reason we're here tonight is in regards to the, the resolution. We would ask that it not be a provisional license. Whether you know this or not, the, the individuals that live in this particular place and who receive services from Bridges, Minnesota are people who do have disabilities. They would more than likely, whether it's this individual person or somebody else, would have a larger-than-regular call volume. So if we would agree to this provisions, more than likely, we would be in breach of it fairly quickly. So we are requesting that it not be provisional due to the individuals who are tenants there who are disabled, and we would request a reasonable accommodation from this particular ordinance. We have been working with, with the city for two years now in, in trying to resolve a lot of these issues. We've gone different routes, gone different avenues. We've always been, and Ms. Reese can attest to more of that, always been trying to look for a different solution than what we are working on. When we did receive this, we did reach out to the officer and, and even during a pandemic and a moratorium, we were able to talk to this individual's team. And this individual had wanted to move anyways, so will be moving. Again, in, in trying to give every solution a possibility available. I don't know if you want to hear from Mrs. Reese in regards to...
That would be good.
Okay. Kristi, do you want to talk to them about what has been involved in the last couple of years?
Yeah. So we, the person that is really responsible for a large amount of these calls, because there's a person on each side of the duplex, has significant mental health needs. And, you know, it... And, you know, it, she is not under state guardianship but has been, through county members, deemed able to live in the community and on her own, and she initially had chosen to live in Columbia Heights. And that doesn't mean that she was going to act wonderfully, obviously, like this is a significant amount of calls, we recognize that, but we, she has a team at Unity Hospital that we, Bill knows very well, and we've worked tirelessly to figure out how we can get these call volumes down. We've worked several different programs, we've brought in a behavioral analyst, we've changed supervisors multiple, multiple times, we've asked the county that she's from, that pays for her to be there at this licensed group home to increase rates, to pay staff more, so we have more able staff to, with higher skills to work with her. So we have tried multiple things to try to reduce the call volume to the, the city and the police. And so, obviously, we have seen the charges, and we know that she is incredibly taxing on the police force, and so we recognize that, you know, that this is an issue, and we have always known that it was an issue. But we really, you know, she's been talking about moving, talking about getting a fresh start, and whether I believe that that'll solve all of her issues is up to her. But the reality is, is that after hearing from Captain Johnston expedited that conversation with her team, and, and they've agreed to a move-out date, I think it's August 20th, and so we're, we're operating within getting her out of that property. I believe that the calls will be significantly reduced. But I, I do worry, because the reality is, is that's a licensed one-person home, and, you know, we, our goal will be to move somebody else in there that has disabilities. Do I think that they'll call the police 262 times? Probably not. She's, she is out of our entire organization, she, she takes the trophy for that. So I, I believe it will be significantly less than that, but do I believe that it'll be only 12 in the year? I, I can't promise that, and that is why I think that we would prefer to just acknowledge that, you know, we're moving quickly and moving her on to another place in hopes that that helps her, and, and that we can have our rental license fully instated.
Hey, anybody, did you want to make another comment?
No.
Any of the councilmembers want to make a comment? Councilmember Biskins?
First, I have a question for Captain Johnston. For, are there any conditions attached to this provisional rental license? And what are they?
Yep. So, thank you. The provisions are listed under the order of council on the bottom of the initial page and the other one. And so the provisions are, there's four of them. One is that the current resident of 5049 Jackson Street moves out within 30 days. The second is, is that they, they have regular contact with the police department on a monthly basis, and that can be by email, phone, or in person. And, and they, as Halen House or their representative. And that's a way to kind of monitor, keep tabs on the situation and make sure everybody's on the same page. The third requirement would be that they reduce the calls for service to reflect average calls for service from previous years and compared to similar properties. One of the things that I think is important to note out is, is that we've been working with this organization for this two years. We, we talked to you about this property last year, we decided to table it at that time, because we, we were seeing some minimal progress in moving, and we were hoping that that was going to be lasting. Turned out it wasn't, in some cases, things have gotten worse, and so we really felt like we were left with no choice than to bring this back to you this year. But we, we can plan to continue to, to work with that property, and that was one of the reasons that we changed our motion recommendation from a revocation to a provisional, because it is recognizing that this doesn't just affect one tenant, but it affects two sides of a duplex. And then the final one is, is that they just meet with any requests from the police department or the fire department as needed.
Comments I have. One is, I support a provisional rental license because of the two-year behavior issues that we've had with this property and the, your business's inability to control this or deal properly with this person's behavior. And I don't trust, right now, whoever moves in. I want, I'd rather have these conditions where you're working with the police department and it's required than to just give you your license back and have this come back again with other situations, because obviously, the person that's there now is not in a proper and appropriate housing situation, period. So I would prefer a provisional license to make sure this is monitored, that you've regained the trust of the city again before we pour thousands more dollars into this property and whoever's going to live there again, because that's a lot of taxpayer money that has been spent in the last two years taking care of one person. So that's, um, let's see.
Councilmember Biskins, we also know that Halen House has another property in the city, and we know that they're keeping those calls within what we expect, so we know they have the capability to do this.
I'd still prefer a provisional license in this situation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Navinsky?
I would agree with Connie on the provisional, just to help make sure and maintain that we have the communication and the updates from Bridges, and that they're able to take care of the tenants properly. I mean, 262 calls is pretty significant, so I would fully support the provisional.
Councilmember Biskins?
I'd like to add another provision, just to make sure that, that the rest of the fees, that the fines that have been, are paid. That's another condition I'd like to see added to that, too, that it's paid within a reasonable period of time. See what our...
Actually, Councilmember Biskins, I did have some conversations with the police department last Wednesday on that when I was there. And as part of our discussion related to this, there have been some significant calls for service fees that have not only been paid but also accrued.
Right, about half of them.
And it was the department's position through the chief that if they're, if the, if the license holder agreed to the provisional license, that the outstanding fees that had accrued, the, the police department through the chief would be recommending as a part of the provisional license that those fees be waived, because the, as a sign of, of good faith on the city, that we're hoping that they can get somebody in there that will not draw those same amount of calls. Now, I'm not, you know, you're not, you decide whatever you want to decide, I'm just saying that that was the discussion that we had, and that would be part of the consideration as far as a provisional license. Now, after the council has had its say here with, because we haven't opened a public hearing yet.
Not yet.
After the council's had its say, and the license holder can get a sense for where things are moving, if they want to stipulate that they would agree to a provisional license with the only subject being up in the air is the outstanding fees, that would need some further vetting by the council, that we would not have to open the public hearing and conduct the public hearing. If they...
Say that again?
If they, if they would agree to the provisional license being imposed, that, that avoids the possibility of a license revocation, but it also doesn't give them their full license, which is what they're asking for. If they don't want to agree to the provisional, that's fine, too, but then I would have the, the council and the mayor open the formal hearing, conduct the public hearing, and then your options are revocation, limited, or full at that point in time, but only after the full public hearing.
So you want us to discuss the fines after?
Well, I first, we first need to know whether we're going to need to hold a public hearing or not, and I'll defer to the license holder on that. If we're going to have a public hearing, or if we're not going to have a public hearing, or, and they indicate they're willing to that stipulation, subject to further discussion regarding the outstanding fees, then let's have a discussion regarding the outstanding fees. If they don't want to agree to a provisional license, that's fine, too. Then I would request the mayor open a formal public hearing, and I'll have the police department give their presentation, and the license holder can also speak.
Councilmember Mershen, did you want to make a comment, too?
Yeah. I'm, I'm with Nick and Connie on that 12-month, or 12-month provisional license. It's been going on too long, and that's way too many calls, so...
Did you want to make a comment to Councilmember Williams?
I couldn't quite understand what John said, but he was in favor of the fees?
No, he was...
I made the, I made the comment that I'm in favor of the provisional license for the 12 months to see how it works out, because there's just too many calls to that, to that place and stuff, so...
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. I, I agree with that. Thank you.
It looks like we are leaning towards provisional license, so at that point...
Well, Madam Mayor, it appears to be the consensus of the council that it's the council's preference to have at a minimum a provisional license versus a full license reinstatement. So now I would, I would ask the license holder to provide to the council whether they want to agree to the imposition of the limited license with further discussion, perhaps no decision tonight on the fees, to either table that or to, or to have further discussion on that as part of the agreement tonight, or whether they want to go through the public hearing and have the opportunity for the council to determine if they either want to revoke, provide a provisional, or provide a full license.
Katie, did you want to come speak, please?
Yes, please, if I could. Given the consensus from the council, we will, we will not be fighting the provisional license.
Could you explain to maybe people who are here what that means for your, your resi, it is strictly that one residence?
Yes.
And it's not the adjacent duplex? Or is it the whole building?
It includes both, is my understanding, is both properties. So the individual who will be leaving roughly about the 20th, but the person who is still there, yes, it will, it will affect them, yes.
Thank you. Kristi, did you want to say anything else? Okay. Then, we are looking at a provisional license. I need some wordings here. Hold on. Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. It is, it is in there, I see it.
You got it, Madam Mayor?
Yeah. And there is no public hearing because they're agreeing to the provisional?
Right. We don't have to open a public hearing. You can just ask for the reading of the resolution. And for tonight's purposes, I think we'll read the resolution, I need to get it in front of me here. You got it there? Thank you. The, I would recommend for this evening that the conditions that are laid out for the conditional, provisional license be the conditions that are there, that we not address the, the fees that are currently outstanding. Now, I've given you some indication, but of course, there's been no formal presentation or action on those outstanding fees. But suffice it to say that you understand the police department is willing to, I guess, negotiate, for lack of a better term, those outstanding fees depending on how things go. And so it'd be my recommendation to not include those as a condition of the provisional license, but rather just not address them tonight because they're not before you in any formal fashion, and let the police department pursue that as they see fit.
So if I want to discuss, like, say, at the next work session, how would I approach that? Because I, I do want to discuss it. I don't want it just to let it go with the, you know, the voting on the provisional license, so...
Well, you can discuss it right now if you want, I'm not going to tell you what to do.
No, I'm just deciding if it's...
I'm for the fees for the discussion, when we have it, tonight or whenever. I don't see why...
Would you like to discuss it tonight, or should we discuss it at work session? John, what do you think?
Well, the, just the procedural question comes up, whether we, and again, I...
I'm confused, because we can...
Well, we, it's not formally before you, so I'm a little bit hesitant to say that...
So it's something I can bring up?
We ought to take any type of action on it tonight. Is it food for further discussion? Certainly, and that's probably better had initially at a work session.
That's fine.
With the license holder notice, so they can come in and, and also participate in that discussion.
That's fine. I just want to know if there's a, something we needed to add to the...
Yeah. I mean, they don't go away tonight, they're, they're just out there, and we need to deal with them in some fashion, but we're trying to take a step at a time, and right now, with the provisional license, that seems to be a real good positive step forward.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
So it would just be a reading of the resolution, Madam Mayor?
Just under the order of the council?
Yes, and then the adoption.
Okay. I do want to clarify one thing, don't go, Jim. In, in kind of reflecting to it Connie and Nick have discussed about the fees, yes, the, the police have said that they would waive the fees, but that doesn't mean they're waiving all fees in the future.
Oh, it doesn't even mean they're, they're waiving the fees that are out there, because of course, the police department doesn't have the authority to do that. That needs to be a discussion with you, Madam Mayor, as the head of the police department first.
Correct.
And then determine whether it needs to come to the council for, for further determination and action. So I just threw that out there as a future food-for-thought item, because it is, it is something that's going to come up at some point here in the coming weeks.
Okay.
So, just a quick question about the motion. Now, is the motion that we have that we were giving...
We're, we're going to read just, on page 103.
103.
Under order of the council. We need to read the whole thing.
103, the whole page?
Under order of council.
Resolution number 2020-57, resolution of city council?
No, the rental license, towards the bottom of the page.
Sorry, my...
Move, okay.
Nick, do you see it?
Procedurally, on, on your agenda, it's item 7A.
Yep.
And we are not closing the public hearing because we never opened one.
Okay.
Okay? So just indicate your regular motion is that you're waiving the reading of Resolution 2020-57, there being ample copies available to public. And then if that motion passes, then there won't be a, the reading of it, and then move to adopt the, under the motion there for 2020-57, for the 12-month provisional license.
Okay. I misunderstood. I misunderstood.
Let us read it as...
Yeah. Just, you're, you're taking the action, you're just removing that public hearing aspect out of it.
All right. Could I get a motion?
Okay. Move to close the public hearing?
Oh, we don't need to that part.
Okay. Move to adopt Resolution 2020-57...
Oh, excuse me, we do need to waive the reading, sorry.
Move to waive the reading of Resolution 2020-57, there being ample copies available to the public.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then I need a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt Resolution 2020-57 to modify the rental license held by Halen House LLC to a 12-month provisional license.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Navinsky. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Next is items for consideration, we have a bid for adopt Resolution 2020-58 being a resolution accepting bids and awarding the contract for the demolition of office building and parking ramp at 3989 Central Avenue and 950 40th Avenue, City Project 2011.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. At the July 13th meeting, the city council discussed the project and authorized staff to seek bids on the two, two addresses, the two structures that you had just identified. So we prepared plans and specs, we advertised through our normal sources, and prior to the bid opening, which was held on August 4th, we did hold a pre-demo site inspection for any interested party for the demolition project. So we had both general contractors, and we had environmental abatement contract to show up to that. We went through the entire building, and so they had an opportunity to see what was involved with the overall site demolition. On Tuesday, August 4th, we did receive bids, and the bids ranged from a low of 664,000 to a high of 1,425,000, I believe. And with that, bids have been checked by the city's construction manager, Doran, and we are recommending award to the low contractor, low-bid contractor of Rachel Contracting, in the amount of 664,371 dollars. The engineer's estimate for this project was 670,000, so we're right in line with where we thought the bids would come in. Be happy to respond to any questions that you might have. Madam Mayor?
Excited about this happening. Anybody else? Councilmember Williams?
I have a lot of trouble with this, Kevin, because we were promised when we went in with the Solantis that they were going to, when we bought the building, we, they were going to make a deal with us right away. going to make a deal with us right away. And now we're almost a year away, and now they're telling us we got to pay for the demonstration, or demolish of it. I'm really in trouble by it.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the, the agreement is still in the works, and the reason why it's delayed and Alatus isn't pursuing this is quite frankly, just due to how the release of entitlements on the building transpired. And right now, we're still in legal with that, and that's still going through the process with the cell towers. So I think just to keep the whole project moving, you know, we feel that it's in our best interest to move forward with this, and I think the developer would still be paying for it. We're, you know, we're not on the hook for this, so the developer would still be paying for it, and-
Who's paying for it?
It's Alatus, so the developer-
They're going to pay for demolition? But they haven't bought the property yet.
They have not bought the property yet.
Well, they will pay for demolition, though.
The closing, I believe, is still scheduled for the end of the year.
Yeah, I would just add to that, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, that, yes, there are legal issues that are muddying up the waters here, but with regard to the demolition of the building, that was something that was always on the Alatus financial side of the ledger sheet. And the fact that the, the agreements are where they at, are where they are at, that Alatus is, is still, you know, looking at paying for the demolition when they frankly don't own the property. Now, if, if things go south, and this project evaporates for some reason, then the fact that Alatus has paid for the demolition, that adds value to the property, because right now, the property is encumbered by a functionally obsolete building and parking ramp, so it's actually a detriment to the value. Once those are removed, that gives value to the city, so Alatus is paying for something that may give value to the city, and, and what do they get in return? Well, the, they will get reimbursed for the demolition from the city. It'll either be as part of the development project, or just because if the project goes away, the city will still be reimbursing them for the cost of that demolition, because now we have a more valuable property, because those buildings don't encumber the property anymore. So, it, it's a convoluted way to answer it. They're paying for it upfront, and hopeful, you know, hopefully what will transpire is it'll work into the financing plans that are already in place for the development. If those don't happen, for some reason, then the, then they will be reimbursed for the demolition expenses, because of course, they'll have no interest in the property, and will have received benefit to the property for that demolition. So that's how we've structured it. That's how we're able to move forward with these legal issues that don't affect the, the buildings being there, but the legal issues that are currently, you know, working themselves through the court system.
Thank you for discussing that.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
And take into consideration, too, the, the safety, too. It's, it would be, there's, people are trying to vandalize the property, trying to vandalize the parking ramp. This is a safety issue. If somebody could get hurt, it would be, it would be disastrous for the city. So it would be better if they could remove it and get it out of the way before it gets too cold in the season to, to do anything like that.
But at least we know now, if we're voting on this tonight, if we, if they don't come through, we're stuck even more money on that built property.
The property is more valuable without the building on it, so it'd be a shovel-ready space.
Right.
That other developers would probably jump on, especially when it's in our downtown. So I'm, it's, it's a risk I'm willing to take. And plus, it's an eyesore, lots of police phone calls there. And again, like Donna said, safety issues up. I mean, if somebody gets inside and that elevator's not working, that's huge. So no, it's, to me, to clean it up, get it ready, and close, and have a new building, hopefully, and if not, we have a valuable site available.
Kevin, did you have anything else?
Madam Mayor, I don't. Any word?
Any other questions? Councilmember Mershen, did you have a comment?
I just, I just think that if they were going to bail on us, they would have done it already. So I got good faith in them. I know this is going to go forward. I just got a good gut feeling, so hopefully I'm right.
Yeah, it's not being held up on their end. It's on our end, Bobby. It's the title to the building and the cell phone towers.
Yeah. So I'm super excited about this. Do we, once we, now that we, once we vote on it tonight, do we have a timeline when they plan on starting and when we can watch?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the timeframe on this would be, we would have to get the contract signed, the bonding put together, really, the contractor needs to do that, and also their insurance in place. Once that happens, then they can move forward with it. Once that happens, there is a window of about eight weeks for them to get the site taken down, really.
I mean, so like, are we looking at end of August, beginning of September? Can, will you email us and let us know the date?
Certainly. It's eight weeks. We were looking at the end of October.
For it to be completed.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Actually, I would follow that up.
All right.
The timing is as soon as we can give Connie a hard hat and a sledgehammer.
All right, Councilmember Williams?
Well, the reason I'm concerned is because we were told that we were going to get paid when we bought it, right away, and we didn't get paid. And now, a year later, we're getting more promises, but I'm very concerned for our city, because I think that's our responsibility.
Councilmember Williams, we're not being promised anything. We have a title issue on the property that has to be cleared, and that's what's holding this up. Not Alatus.
If anything, the city is the one really holding it up and didn't deliver on the promise to Alatus, because we didn't have a site that was ready to sell.
Well, that was our fault, and that's why I was, I was against it from the beginning.
Exactly, that's why we have to keep the project.
And that's when they gave me a little kidnapping, says, "We'll bill you a city council free." That wasn't free, either.
And I would disagree that it's the city, because our city has been working for two years with this company to clear that title, get it taken care of. We bent over backwards to do what we could to clear it. So I don't think it's the city's fault, either. We've been working diligently on that. It's the company that has the leasing on the roof that is giving us a hard time.
But we own the building, so.
Go ahead, Jim.
I'll give you another two cents.
All right, okay.
You know, I, it, it's a complicated and long story with regard to the city, the EDA, the prior property owner, well, the prior property history, and the current developer that's in line, and the encumbrance holders for the cell leases. Lot of, lot of fingers in that pie. And at this point in time, I'm not sure it benefits anybody to, to say whose fault it is, because frankly, I'm not sure that any one party is at fault.
There's not a fault, but it's not the developer holding this process.
No, it is certainly not the developer holding it up.
Right.
What's holding it up is the city's inability to get clear title.
Right.
And that's got a little murky history there as well, but that's what's holding it up, and that's what we're currently trying to resolve through the court system.
Good. Thank you. If there are no other comments, can I get a motion to waive the reading, please?
Motion to waive the reading of Resolution 2020-58, there being ample copies available to the public.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Nowitzki.
Roll call, please, Donna.
Oh, this is for waiving the reading?
Okay, that's fine.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Then I could get a motion to adopt, please?
Move to adopt Resolution 2020-58, being a resolution accepting bids and awarding the contract for the demolition of office building and parking ramp at 3989 Central Avenue and 950 40th Avenue, City Project 2011, to Rachel Contracting LLC of St. Michael, Minnesota, based upon their low qualified responsible bid in the amount of 664,371 dollars, with funds to be appropriated from 408-52011-5185, and furthermore, to authorize the mayor and the city manager to enter into a contract for the same.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Biskins, second by Councilmember Nowitzki. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was supposed to do a roll call.
Roll call.
I, could we do a roll call, Christie, please?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
I will abstain.
Councilmember Mershen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nowitzki?
Aye.
Madam Mayor?
Aye. Four ayes, one nay, we have passes. Thank you. And moving on to City Council Administrative Reports. Connie, did you want to start?
Sure. I wasn't able to attend physically to the school board meeting last Tuesday, but I did watch it online, and they have come up with a pretty good plan for starting of school. They have a four-level program. First level would be everyone stays home, and they do school online. The second level is, which is where they're planning on starting, is that kids that really need to be in the school will be able to go. It's a smaller group, and they have things set up for that. Third or fourth was a little confusing to me, so I'm not going to get in details. If you want details, I'd suggest calling, contacting the, the school on that. So I was able to watch that. I attended a Booster's Bingo at unofficial, outside at their patio. It was fun, finally to do some kind of event in the city for a change. And again, volunteered at Blooming Sunshine Garden, Lomiaki Garden. We did more weeding, and we're starting harvesting.
Councilmember Williams?
Well, I just want to encourage everyone, make sure they vote tomorrow. Tomorrow's a primary day. In other words, I hope everyone continues to have good health, because we've been very fortunate in our company not to have anyone. Today, I've just found out we had one that was on, set, set aside, because he may have been in contact, but that's the first one I've had that I've known of in our company. Thank you for that.
Councilmember Mershen?
I have nothing.
Nothing's happening at the VFW?
No, not this month.
All right. Councilmember Nowitzki?
I got nothing.
Nothing. Your kids are all ready for school?
Well, they're still home, yeah.
Okay. All right. I did get a couple emails about school openings. Thank you, Connie, for mentioning Columbia Heights, because I hadn't received an email from them as to how their program is working. Prodeo sent that they are going to be only offering full-time distance learning for all students in all grades when the school year starts on September 8th, and then they will reassess on, and talk to the families on October 5th for possible looking at a hybrid plan, probably similar to what the Columbia Heights School District is doing. Immaculate Conception said that they are going to do a full in-person reopening of their schools, pre-K through 8. So they're back to school September 8th, so if your kids are there, they are going to be busy at that school. And, oh, and I wanted to mention, if I got it here, here it is. The U.S. Census Bureau sent out an announcement that they're doing acceleration, their acceleration of the completion of the field data collection, which means door knocking and, and phone calling are going to be ending on September 30th, a month earlier than originally scheduled, and an additional self-response options are also ending on September 30th. So if you still need to fill out your census report, now's the time to do it, get it done. If you need help, there are people at the library that can help you. Feel free to stop in and ask for help. We, our schools, schools need it. Our, we need it for federal funding, we need it for the number of congressional seats, and it decides voting districts. So this is an important year to please, please fill out your census. It's very simple, easy, and if you need to, check out the census website. And thank you, Kelly. Do you want, welcome back?
I was going to say, I don't have a lot to report. It's my first day back in the office, and I could not be happier. But I'm just playing catch-up right now, so that's about it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Nothing to add, Madam Mayor, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Biskins?
I forgot one thing, and it was important. I was in the green sheet, and Kevin's not here, but League of Cities gave our city a sustainability, a sustainable award.
Oh, yes, yep.
And I wanted to thank Public Works and Kevin and his staff for working very hard on that. It was for organic composting and recycling achievements.
We will have a formal presentation of that award coming up in an upcoming meeting, too. Very, very well-deserved, especially by Jesse and, and Public Works, and Ben for writing the award nomination. So we will make sure that we get a little more formal recognition for that one.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Then that completes our evening. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nowitzki, second by Councilmember Mershen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.